Hi, everyone.
Hello.
This is Robert. Can anybody hear me?
Hello.
Hello.
I can hear you. This is Neva.
Okay. I don't have video because the host unvideoed me.
Yeah, I don't either.
Okay.
Tom, you're sharing your screen.
How do I get out of it?
Right in the bottom in the middle, there's a share screen button. It should be able to stop.
Let's see. I'm looking for it.
Okay, I turned the webcam video back on.
Yep, on tops. There you go, Tom.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Nice clear picture there, boss.
Much video or audio, though?
Oh, pretty good here. I couldn't give you anything at home, so that's why I came back to the office.
Okay, how did I get my picture on?
Turn that camera on in the bottom left-hand corner. It says, "Stop video."
Uh, "Stop video, start video."
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Tom.
I know how to turn this thing on and off. Everything in between is different.
I agree, Tom.
We'll get the hang of it.
My youngest daughter gives me lessons once a week. I'm serious about that on both my iPad and my computer. We get together once a week and she says, "All right, Dad, this is how you do this."
I love it.
Can I borrow her?
Do what?
Can I borrow her?
She doesn't charge very much.
Okay.
Well, I see we have a lot of items on the agenda, but it looks almost like it's all for the county.
Yep.
Linda, do we have people not going to be here?
I think we're all here except for Rebecca. Oh, I don't see Steven.
Yeah, we're missing two.
Let me see if I can.
Oh, hey, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Before we get started, thank you for the book.
You're welcome, sir. I thought you'd enjoy it.
An interesting note on the first page of the introduction. It mentions the location of Gurney Station. That's the house where Stonewall Jackson died. I visited that house, saw the bed he died in. The house is still furnished just like it was at the time they brought him there after the Battle of Chancellorsville.
So I thought you'd enjoy the book.
Oh, you bet. I already enjoyed it from the first page.
It's a slightly different take on what the man did.
I see Stevens here now. I don't see Rebecca yet.
Well, we still got, by my watch, we still got a couple minutes.
Yep.
I don't know what the chairman has.
I got 6:31 on my phone.
Well, if it's 6:31, why don't you bang the hammer and let's get started?
Because your watch is slow. Do we have to go by your watch?
Whatever.
Give Rebecca a few seconds here. Hi, Steven.
Steve.
Hi, everybody. How y'all doing?
Hey, Steve.
Shut this down. Twelve. Well, we got a lot of items on the agenda. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
Flag.
To the flag.
United States of America. To the Republic of America.
To the United States.
One nation.
Under God. And the. Civil liberties.
Okay, see you later. See you in a bit. Bye.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the meeting in October.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that the minute for October the 6th be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Let's proceed to vote then.
Candelaria?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Reenie?
Yes. First item of business tonight is the cash and loofes for 2021. Tracy, would you like to highlight that, please?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Feel like I should just ask every time, just in case.
Thank you for that.
Yep. So the cash and loofes are set every year and they're updated based on recent sales data of vacant land within five miles of the city limits. The cash and loofe is where a developer would pay cash instead of donating the 5% of the land area, which the city often would prefer the cash over a piece of land in the event they don't really want to manage the land area. The average, this is calculated using the average value of sales prices, and again, that's vacant land within five miles outside the city over the course of five years. And the data comes from the county. The county staff pulls this from their assessor's data based on sales. And last year it was set at 14,500 for the value of the acre of land and the fee was set at $725. This year, the vacant land sales went up to $14,775 and it's been customary for us to round this up. So staff is recommending we round it up to $14,800 and that will set the fee at $740. So the planning commission reviews this information and then makes a recommendation to city council to incorporate this in the updated fee schedules, which they will adopt by ordinance when that happens here in a couple weeks. Any questions?
This cash and loofe, Tracy? Where does the money go? So what does the city do with it? Does it go into a general fund? Is it allocated by percentage to certain districts? Can you tell us where the money goes, please?
Right now, I think it's supposed to be set aside for, you know, basically purchases of land for open space parks and I believe schools if needed. The truth is, is since I've worked for the city of Cortez, we haven't had a major subdivision and a donation of cash and loo. So I don't, you know, with the fact that finance is kind of cleaning up the ledgers, I'm assuming when we do get cash and loo in the future, it's going to go into its own location. But that's my understanding.
Just for some background, every municipality that I know and county as well does do a donation of land per, oftentimes it's triggered with a residential development, but it's basically the idea that that there's some nexus in between like a growth or increase in development and a need for having facilities like parks, open space and schools. So that is a very common thing and usually like if, like with the city of Cortez, it normally goes into like a pool for open space or park funds for park improvements. Or it depends, the other, the other common usage is to set aside fees for, or land dedication or fees for schools. And I noticed in our land use code, it mentions schools and parks and open space in three different areas. And anyways, it's just something that just about every, every local government does require. And so for the city of Cortez, I'm pretty sure it should just get set aside into their open space fund or parks fund.
Yeah, I know that's a rule somewhere. I don't think that location of where the money goes is in the actual land use code, but it does state basically parks and schools.
So it's, it's money for the schools that is going directly to the schools to use for whatever they deem fit? Or is it for basically the spaces to, to put schools on?
So Tracy. Tracy, this is Mike. Isn't there a portion of it when we collect it goes to the school district in lieu of them having their own impact fee? What I'm remembering, so when you set this fee and we collect it, I'm not sure where it goes within the city, but I thought a portion was allocated to the school district as just cash.
Um, you know, I don't know that that's lined out in our code. I'm not seeing that in particular. It states requirements for open space, school sites, park and recreational areas are intended to ensure, et cetera. And then, you know, it keeps referencing land dedicated or otherwise set aside for open space, school sites and park and recreational areas. So, you know, again, you know, we haven't had to really bet this after a fee has been provided for a very long time and I can't speak to what happened in the past.
Um, how about we, I research this and get you folks an answer more specific as to what happens. I can check then with Mr. Doherty and Mr. Burkett and make sure we all are on the same page and follow where the money goes.
I like that idea.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tracy?
So Tracy, though, you still need a recommendation from us, right, for the city council for the fee increase?
That's correct. This is required by the code every year to update the fee. So, I mean, we can certainly work on with finance getting the, you know, just a policy or a protocol in place, just so everyone has the specificity of where the money's going to land.
So Tracy, are you looking for a motion to approve the fee for 2021?
That is correct.
Which gets you referred to the council, right?
Yes.
So I guess I would entertain a motion as such.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the council adopt the value of 14,800 per acre for calculating the cash and loofe. Option for granting property for public land dedication equating to a $740 per acre fee.
There a second to the motion?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'll make this one comment. I personally feel like this is, when, when, one of the biggest issues that we have, not only in the city of Cortez right now, but in Monizuma County, is affordable housing. And houses have to go on top of land at some point. And building homes right now, particularly in the city of Cortez, I mean, there's use tax, there's all of your various permits, there are tap fees, you name it, whatever. Probably to about the tune of around $20,000 before you can even break ground. And that is, those are fees, every fee that we add and we increase goes directly to the people trying to purchase the home. So with that being said, I personally feel like this is just, just an increase that is going to further go down the line to the people who are ultimately trying to purchase homes or people who will potentially be renting homes. And it's one more added thing on top of people who are already struggling to find affordable housing. So without one, knowing where the money is going and exactly where it's allocated and what is being used for specifically, I feel like it's an additional burden upon the people who will ultimately be given the fee at the end, which is the end user of the home. So I don't, I personally don't like the idea of it, period. And, and that's, those are my two cents for the record, if you will, is basically it's, it's an additional tax, it's taxation without representation and I'm not in favor of it.
Well, so with Tabor and everything, because you can't really have taxation without representation in the state of Colorado, it's actually a fee in lieu of service. And the idea in most municipalities, it actually is tied to every single family housing unit that gets developed where you get a fee in lieu or an actual dedication. So in Cortez, the fact that it's only tied to a subdivision really makes it very rare that this is ever collected because most of Cortez is already platted. So I see your point, but I don't think that that's actually the case here in Cortez. And ideally, it should probably get earmarked for parks and rec and open space. And possibly if it goes to schools, I'm not really sure because that's not necessarily laid out in our land use code where it is sometimes laid out specifically. But I don't, I don't really feel that it's over burdensome at all. In fact, I've seen other communities have a much larger burden in trying to get rights before they develop. And again, this is just for subdivisions. It's not tied to new residential permits, which is actually a lot more common and a lot more cumbersome.
Yeah, Mike, you'd have to research that. Seems to me this came up when Tom and I were way back on city council and it was just made to guarantee there was going to be a certain amount of open space. And if there wasn't open space enough available in that subdivision, then they could do this in lieu of the open space.
I'm remembering something similar, sir, but it's been so long since we've ever collected it. And I do remember something about the schools getting a piece of this fee that we get so they wouldn't have to charge their own for some reason. And I, I'll have to find that.
So Stephen.
Thank you. Rebecca, thank you for all of your comments. I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, maybe taxation was the wrong word. It still is a fee that's collected that will ultimately be passed down to the end user.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? And we're just recommending to council. Any other discussion, then let's go ahead and vote, Linda.
Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
No.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Reenie?
Yes. Next item, I guess we start a whole list of county developments and let's see, Tracy, I guess you're on the first one here.
Uh, yeah, so thank you. Let me. Okay, so this is a county project that's in, it's immediately outside of the city on property just south of Monizuma Cortez High School. On your screen, I believe that's this property up in the upper left-hand corner.
Yep.
This is where County Road J was extended over to 27. It's just south of that. The applicant wants to subdivide the property into 34 lots of approximately a half acre each. The master street plan does show what would be 7th Street extended, but now County Road J would be an 80-foot right-of-way. And according to the county GIS, that width there, where you can see that road alignment, is 135 feet. So the property of the applicant's subdivision does not need to dedicate any additional right-of-way because there's already adequate right-of-way for the possible futures of this road, given that there's 135 feet. So that is staff's recommendation to authorize the chair to sign the plat for compliance with the master street plan.
Any questions for Tracy? Guess I would entertain a motion to approve me signing the plat then.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to authorize you authorize the P&amp;Z chairman, which is you, to sign the plat for the with signature block number one for compliance with the master street plan.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Tracy, when does county P&amp;Z meet? Is that November 12?
That's correct. So pretty soon here. We'll forward any comments on this or any other, of the other projects before you tonight.
So any discussion on the motion on the table? Or comments we want to add to it? Okay, I guess we'll proceed to vote.
Did we receive a second?
Yeah, I thought.
I think Steve did.
Yes.
Okay.
That was me.
Sorry, I missed, sorry, I missed that. McDaniel?
Yes.
Levy?
You're muted.
Sorry. Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
Reenie?
Yes. Next item is another county development and Neva, I guess you're up.
All right, let me show my screen here. Share. Okay. So this is a county project just north of the city limits. Jared and Colette Wyatt have applied to the county for a single, single lot minor development of property located at 26833 Road L. And so this is almost adjacent to Highway 145 and County Road L and City Road Eleanor. So applicants propose to split off that one nine-acre lot to the east of the property. And they have requested to rezone the property from AR 3 to 9 or 2, AR 3, 9 and AR 10 to 34 for the remainder property. The uses of this area include residential and agricultural uses. The requested rezoning would be compatible with those densities. The Monizuma water will service the new lot. And again, Road L is depicted on the adopted streets plan. The new lot would access County Road L. And this is a project that the Monizuma County Planning Commission will hear on November 12. Guys, any questions or comments on this application? Anything we want to forward on to the county commissioners?
Thank you, Neva. Is there any indication of what they're going to do with the close to 40 acres?
No, there's nothing in the staff, in the county packets that indicate that. What they're going to do.
Any questions, comments for Neva?
I guess I should state there is a residence on that 40 acres.
Yeah. No more questions, I guess I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to direct the chair to sign the plat for the single lot development on property owned by Jared and Colette Wyatt, located at 26833 Road L, Cortez, Colorado, consisting of one approximately nine-acre lot on property in Monizuma County within three-mile urban influence area with signature block number one for compliance with the master streets plan.
I'll second the motion.
Tom seconds it. We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's proceed to vote then.
Levy?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Reenie?
Yes. Next item. Another county development and Neva, I guess you get to highlight us on that one, too.
All right. Um, so this is a single lot minor development for William and Carol Reynolds at 29467 Road N, Cortez, Colorado. The property is approximately 40 acres in size and applicants are requesting AR 3 to 9 and AR 35 plus zoning. Um, the application was pretty unclear. I'm not exactly sure what's happening here. The application, the maps attached to the application, what I'm sharing on your screen suggests that a smaller lot will be created from the 40-acre lot. But that's not explicitly stated in the application. Um, and I'm unsure what the red blob is down there with the arrow pointing to it. So I just, I'm not quite sure what's happening. However, the city master street plan does not extend to this area of the county. So it won't have an impact on our, on our master street plan and other than that, I'm just, I'm assuming that they're pulling out the parcel that has, a piece of the parcel that has the existing home and the remainder is going to be a new lot. This is going to the county planning commission on November 12.
Did you say that it was not within the three-mile influence?
It is within three-mile influence area, but this part of Road N is not part of our master street plan. It's not depicted on our master street plan.
Any questions for Neva?
This area is east of, east of town. This area is east of, east of town.
Guess if there's no uh, questions or anything, I'd entertain a motion to.
Mister Chairman, I make the motion to direct the chair to sign the plat for the single lot development on property owned by William and Carol Reynolds, located at two-nine-four-six-seven Road N Cortez, Colorado, on property in Montezuma County within the three-mile urban influence area with signature block number one for compliance with the master street plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Becky, that's fine.
Rebecca seconds it, uh, so, any further discussion? Got a, we'll proceed to vote then.
Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes. Uh, next is item E, another county development.
Alright. Okay. Alright, so this is two-lot moderate subdivision, um, submitted by Joyce Johnson for a property located at two-five-nine-one-one Road P. Uh, the lot is nine-point-seven-nine acres and the applicant has proposed to split the lot into one three-point-five acre property and one six uh, acre lot to the north, um, of the, to the, the north part of the parcel there. Um, so this property, uh, I don't know, you guys might know it with the, the Pike people in there. It doesn't really have anything to do with the project, but it's just an interesting, you know, Montezuma County thing, um. So, the applicant, the application doesn't show any access to that northern parcel. Um, the proposed northern parcel, uh, but the application does state that the applicant will place an easement to the new tract, possibly along the east boundary line of the property, um. The city master street plan does not extend to this area of the county. Uh, and again, this will be reviewed on November twelfth. Staff does recommend that the chairman's sign the signature block for compliance with the master street plan.
Can we recommend approval as long as they continue to decorate the Pike people for Christmas every year? That was like, that was such a highlight and I'm so bummed it hasn't happened in a couple of years, but like, when I lived in Rico, we would like come down and tour Road P for that, it was so cool. Anyway, sorry.
You always make that as a recommendation.
Probably not, but I love that. I do too.
Any other comments, obviously they're gonna have uh ingress and egress, so they'll have to go through the county and they'll have to figure that out.
Right. Right.
Uh, Mister Chairman, I make the motion to direct the chair to sign the plat for the two-lot minor subdivision as requested by Joyce Johnson for property located at two-five-nine-one-one Road P, Dolores, Colorado, within the three-mile urban influence area with signature block number one for compliance with the master streets plan.
That's my conclusion.
Tom second said, um, any further discussion? Let's uh, vote on the motion then.
Levy?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes. Next is item F, another county development, and Neva, you're still up.
Hey, um, this is the county receiving an application for high-impact permit and special use application for um, seven thousand six Highway four ninety-one, um, this is the old M and M truck stop. The applicant is proposing to open a Love's Truck Stop at this site, um, and according to their plans, they are going to demolish the building and put in a new truck stop here. Um, the site's just over five acres, the applicant is requesting uh, heavy industrial zoning and parcels in this area uh, consist of heavy and light industrial zoning with a scattering of uh, residential zoning. The application states the county's traffic threshold will be exceeded, um, meaning over fifteen vehicle round, fifteen vehicle round trips per day, uh, but no statement of mitigation is provided as required by the county's land use code. The site does not have direct access to the state highway, um, and is proposing to use two existing access points from Road G. However, the section of Road G is is um owned by CDOT, so I'm assuming they'll need some sort of CDOT uh, access permits for that site. Um, there wasn't a special use application included, um, with the high-impact permit application, so I'm, we don't know what's going on with that. But there is new motion required for this review. The, you guys can recommend planning staff to forward any recommendations, um, to the county commission, uh, if you find it appropriate, so. And that's all I have for this one.
So you're, I understand we do not need a motion?
No, you don't need a motion for this, no.
To make.
Not a subdivision or a plat or anything.
Okay. Anybody want to add a comment to the county?
Um, this is a major gateway to our community as it's the first uh, major intersection when you're coming from the airport. Other than the fact that I'm glad it's no longer gonna be a blighted piece of property and somebody's gonna occupy it. Um, I don't know if anybody else has any consideration or ideas regarding some kind of gateway design or um, just kind of the impact it has as far as a entrance to, um, what people consider the, the Cortez community. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
Well, anything would be an improvement over what's down there now, Rebecca.
I agree with Mister Butler.
I'm excited about the dog park.
Well, just think, just think we may get a Popeye's Chicken in there in the.
You know, that would be great.
Different.
Yeah, if no one's ever had Popeye's Chicken, they don't know what they've been missing.
That's right, Tom.
Uh, and this um, is uh, I would imagine part of the Love uh, visitor stop chain that's all along the expressways, am, am I correct in that, Neva?
That's what I assume, yeah.
I, I think with the trademark sign there, uh, Neva and Tom, I think that, yeah, yes, I'll shut up, sorry, sorry, Neva.
I think that'll be a definite, a definite plus for us because it's like, uh, Rebecca states, that's uh, people coming into Cortez from, from not only the airport, from this, uh, the south, from uh, New Mexico and Arizona passing through Cortez, that M and M has been a terrible eyesore for a number of years now.
So, given the fact that we might get rid of an eyesore, we probably all agree, uh, any other comments before we move on?
I have one, uh, Neva, can we ask the county or the, ask the county to ask the applicant why they want um, heavy industrial when light industrial would, would suffice for a truck stop?
Oh, yeah, we can, we can ask.
You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, to me, the county is, this is just a personal opinion and my thoughts, but they're throwing that heavy industrial zoning um, out on almost everything that's new that's involved with everything, and I, that's, that makes me uncomfortable considering how far it goes. So I would just like to know if they, if they thought that the light industrial would be good enough for a truck stop, I think that would be a better zoning argument, but that's just me.
Alright.
So we'll add that to our comment.
I think that's a great point, Lance.
I think especially since that area down there says the soil's been contaminated forever, that we shouldn't, shouldn't add to it, but that's just, that's just, like I said, thank you, Becky.
Well, it's also listed on um, CDPHE's um, contaminated sites, so.
Right.
Um, whoever's gonna have to be in the chain of title is gonna have to deal with a lot of cleanup issues.
Right.
Um, which is, it's good that it's a.
If I'm not mistaken, that's being cleaned up as we speak. Excavation and, and reclamation has already begun.
Right, that's, that's part of the process in order to be able to build on it, and I don't know if they, they, they would qualify for brownfields redevelopment funding too, so there might be some EPA incentives for grant monies to, to develop this pr- uh, particular parcel because it has been listed, but um, it's definitely um, you know, even though you're doing a cleanup as, whenever you're dealing with in-ground storage of fuels, um, there's always a leakage issue and um, for potential additional contamination, so um, it's, it's it makes sense that, um, you know, light industrial would be more appropriate for the site, but, so I think that that's definitely a worthy question. But um, I'm, I'm really glad that somebody's wanting to do something with this brownfield site, I think that's important.
Okay, just for your information, um, the state of Colorado has a fuel tank fund, I think, is what I call it, that also kicks in to pay for this cleanup. And that may be part of where the money's coming from.
Okay, plug your mic.
Do you guys want to recommend any landscaping or anything?
Any.
Great point, um, I don't see any proposed on here at all, um, certainly, like, I can't imagine why you'd want to walk a dog park, per, or go to the dog park without any shade, but you know.
I mean, there might be landscaping, this is just such a preliminary plan, it's hard to tell.
I'm sure.
Plack some grass, yeah.
Okay, given those discussions, let's move on to item G. Neva? County Development?
Is that me, okay, Kaminsky, okay, let me scroll down to that one. Okay. Alright, okay. Alright, so this is west of town, um, applicants Edward and Carrie Jo Kaminsky have applied to the county for a two-lot moderate subdivision located at twelve-six-six-five Road twenty-three. Um, the lot is almost eighteen acres and the applicants have proposed to split the lot into one three-acre lot with an existing residence and one fourteen-acre lot. They've requested AR three-to-nine zoning and AR ten-to-thirty-four zoning on the lots. Um, the city master street plan does not extend to this area of the county. And I said that twice in my report, so, you know, just to nail that in there, um, and the county planning commission will review this project next week. So. Uh, uh, a couple of months ago, oops, a couple of months ago, P and Z, or maybe it was just last month, um, you guys looked at the Dif and Daffer property just north of there, and they did a, I think a moderate two-lot subdivision as well. Okay, that's all I have on this project.
Kind of looks like a flagpole, the way that they're having that skinny little portion attaching to the road.
It is, yeah.
Just kind of a pet peeve on um, subdivisions when they do that. But, I mean, there's not much we can do about it.
So Neva, did you, and I assume it was not within our three-mile plan?
Within our three-mile area, but the master street plan doesn't go out that far, uh, west.
So would we still want a motion to sign the plat?
Yeah, it'll come with the master street, um, signature block.
Okay. Any questions for Neva on this one? So I would entertain a motion then.
Mister Chairman, I make the motion to direct the chair to sign the plat for the two-lot minor subdivision as requested by Edward and Carrie Jo Kaminsky for property located at one-two-six-six-five Road twenty-three, within the three-mile urban influence area with signature block number one for compliance with the master street plan.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Lance second said, uh, any further discussion? And let's proceed to vote.
McDaniel?
I, or yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes. And then we have an item H. Also, the county development. And Tracy, you get to highlight us on this one.
Okay, um, let's see, I can get you up a air photo. Hang on a sec. There we go. So this project came through a while back, um. I don't have the packet up in front of me, but the applicant came in last Friday and left the Mylar with the city staff looking to get a signature for compliance with the master streets plan, so when the planning commission reviewed this project, it's the Moe-in pro, I don't know what it's called, but it's, they basically are putting uh, four cabins on their property and it's a PUD, and I think it's a general PUD in the county zoning. And they um, were required to also file a plat, and so we did not make a motion for the chairperson to sign that plat when we reviewed this several years ago, I think it was three years ago. So she, she's just trying to get the signature on the plat so she can record it and be done. I guess there was some concern that all the pieces hadn't happened when they received approval three years ago. So I, staff's just asking the planning commission to make a motion that the chair's authorized to sign the Moe-in plat for compliance with the master street plan.
So the county's already approved the development or whatever?
They're already built.
Yeah, it's not really a subdivision, um.
I think they're B and Bs, uh, Tracy.
Right, yeah, rental cabins. Essentially, you know, she, we just got this Friday at three-thirty, um, so we slapped it on the agenda for tonight, yesterday morning, and don't have much information other than the former review by planning commission where there were no concerns, but we did not have an official motion to sign the plat, so that's what we are seeking tonight.
Um, it's mostly just cleaning it up a little bit?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Tracy? Guess I'd entertain a motion then.
Mister Chairman, I make the motion to recommend approval of the GPUD request for zoning for property located in Montezuma County at two-six-nine-six-five Road N, within the three-mile urban influence area, and further recommend, well, they're already there in uh, the signing of the signature block.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Let's proceed to vote.
Sorry, Butler?
Yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes. And then moving on to discussion items, discussion regarding the historic preservation section. Tracy?
Okay, so the historic preservation board has been seeking to amend the historic preservation section of the land use code for some time. They were told that that would be updated with the comprehensive update of the land use code, but as you all know, that did not pass. So recently, they inquired about just moving their section forward independently. And the reasons are that current section's a little bit disorganized. It's not terrible. It's just it would read more clearly if we used the revisions that were done over a period of a couple of years. They began discussions on that change in about 2016 and the state historic preservation office reviewed the proposed changes back in 2016 and again in 2018. So that section's been reviewed numerous times with our board and other agencies. The changes are basically to streamline their powers and duties, to change the requirement to designate individual sites and structures by ordinance so that it's just a resolution that would change, designate the properties as historic. Historic districts would still be required to go through an ordinance approval in order to designate a district, which would be a grouping of properties as opposed to just one individual property. There is language that is proposed to clarify what a contributing property is. So within a historic district, you would identify all the properties in a geographic area that are eligible to be listed for historic designation. So there's properties that are listed and then there are properties that could be listed if the landowner wanted them to be listed and those would be considered contributing properties. Within a historic district, contributing properties have to go through design review in order to make structural changes to the structure. So whether that individual property owner had actually listed it or not, once a district's designated, they would be required to come before the historic preservation board in order to make changes to their building, which is why we wanted to add that language to the code so it was clear if a district was created that this would be required for the contributing properties. I hope that all made sense. That's kind of a little clarification. It doesn't change the rules, but it does make it clearer to the public that that would be required. And then mostly it's just organizational, just moving paragraphs around so that they are grouped together with other like subjects. You know, we did extend some of the timelines between historic preservation board recommendation and the time that council needs to make a decision on it. And then we did add public notice for designation of a historic district, which is not required by the current code. And then we clarified that the historic preservation board would be the authority on historic alterations to listed properties, which is implied by our current code, but the language is not very clear. So I think the intent was to get feedback from planning commission and then take this back to historic preservation board tomorrow night for discussion. And then ultimately, we would send the draft back up to the state and say, here's our final draft. Do you have any more changes you'd like to make? So tonight, I think we're just giving the planning commission an update and seeing if you guys have any thoughts or concerns about this coming forward and if you have any desires for a public outreach process.
This is green. This isn't ready without some more work on going forward. The city's had enforcement questions and disagreements as to how this all works and the building department hasn't always enforced it when they issue building permits and things. And so this ordinance hasn't been, this part of it hasn't been vetted and coordinated with the other building code provisions since, I guess, 2018 is what I'm hearing. So I, that's going to be something I think I need to do in conjunction with the planning and building department is making sure this is all cohesive and coordinated. We don't have a real great history with this part of the land use code misconceptions and other things. So I want to make sure this time, I think Tracy's right, we need to move forward with it and I don't have a problem with it, but I just, I'd like to come back to you folks with it sometime after the first of the year so we can make sure that it's all correct and ready to go. This, this isn't something we need to rush through. It's got more IRS implications sometimes than other things if you get tax credits. And I recognize it's just the local designation, but it's a first step in the process. And so I want to make sure everything is dialed in as far as that's concerned.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I would assume that this would clarify and streamline the whole process a bit. Is that a misnomer or not?
It's unknown to me at this time because I have slept since the last time we did this back in 2018 and the land use code went forward and this wasn't really a big concern. And I really just want to look at everything and coordinate it and make sure it's better. I'm, I'm not saying there's anything wrong. I just want to make sure, you know, dot my i's, cross my t's and make sure we're all where we need to be.
So would we need to wait until January before we pass it on to this historic preservation board?
We're reviewing this tomorrow.
Well, they can review it, but I'm saying it's probably not coming forward as an ordinance based on their recommendations until after I look at it. I mean, I'm, John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see council getting into this much before January, early February on their agendas. And I'm wanting to make sure this thing is correct because it keeps just my history with it. There's little things that keep bugging people. Some of the council people have expressed concerns before about what happens if you make a repair that's, that changes it, much like that house that recently got put into historic designation. You know, do you lose your designation? If people do that, are we supposed to be undesignating them by city action? I mean, these are things I want to make sure everybody understands and is agreed on before we get them. And then all of a sudden go, well, we don't want to do that. So that's some of my concerns.
So Tracy, didn't you say that really it only had an impact on a district, which we don't actually have a historic district in Cortez anyways?
What, what specifically wouldn't have an impact?
Well, I thought you said that for the most part legislative changes aren't represented in this. It's more of like an editorial cleanup and just making things more consistent and cohesive as opposed to actually changing any requirements other than for buildings in a district, but we don't have a district.
So the only change, change, I mean, there's minor tweaks, but the, the changes that would. So the language about the contributing properties is just clarifying what's already required to be a CLG, a certified local government in the district. So the, the main change is changing the designation of the individual sites and structures being designated by ordinance to being designated by resolution. And then, you know, we basically, I did clarify the review process for historic alterations be conducted by the historic preservation board only, which has again been the historic way that that's been conducted. So we just wanted to explicitly state that.
But there's no review criteria being set forth. So, so from my understanding, if somebody wants to be designated or have their property be designated, this only, the only change really that's happening is instead of a two-haring process through an ordinance, it's going through a resolution process, which is one hearing. So it makes it a lot easier for a property owner to get their property designated and, and that the historic preservation board, instead of it going in front of planning and zoning, it's going in front of the historic preservation board for review. But there's no set criteria on the structure to define any kind of changes.
We did not change the criteria that you would weigh a property against to be designated. Is that what you're asking me to clarify? Right, so the criteria for, you know, things that make you eligible for listing are not changing. Yeah.
Like you say, I'm not having big problems, but I just need the time to make sure everything fits with everything else we have instead of just advancing this on its own because it could be more than just editorial changes. There could be some effective substance just by how you do the process.
Sure, I guess this was an information item and we'll just continue to stay updated on it.
Thank you, sir.
Well, is there, there's not any timeline or schedule of events that this needs to take place, is it, Tracy?
Uh, no, there's nothing set in stone. I think everyone on the historic preservation board would be enthusiastic about some activities promoting this moving forward. So, you know, as long as we keep discussing it and keeping it, you know, elevated beyond sitting on the shelf, I think that would be ideal. I think, you know, kind of really right now, we could just focus on an outreach plan and, and, you know, in the meantime, ensure that the language is, is the best it can be.
Well, it would be my recommendation that we follow the advice of the city attorney and give this thing a little more time for him to study and come up with any possible conflicts to the wording.
I think that's the direction we're moving, Tom.
Well, so the city council is the one that actually directs the city attorney. I guess that's up to them. And being the planning and zoning person on historic preser, on the historic preservation board, we are reviewing this tomorrow and we've already looked at it before. And so we're just revisiting this and as Tracy mentioned, this has been something that's been going on for four years. So I don't know why, I'm, I'm fine with everything being on a delayed process. So this is just informational and I don't see any problem with, with the historic preservation board reviewing it tomorrow.
I'm sure if the board reviews it and has any comments, they'll pass it on to Tracy. Okay, let's move on. Item six, you saw the building permits listed for October. Item seven, do we have any other items of business?
Just out of curiosity, I know that a few weeks ago, we had planned on having a workshop in regard to the master streets plan and that got pulled off. Are we of any intention of moving forward on, on reviewing that or where are we at with that?
Yes, staff has been meeting continuously on it. We do still hope to have a workshop on that soon. I, you know, I think we have a pretty good map. And, you know, the draft language that you all still have hasn't really been changed. No one suggested any edits at the staff level. So I, I would like to see us have a workshop hopefully in December, but you know, I don't want to speak for the entire city staff group. But I believe that could happen.
Thanks, Steve. Well, let's just keep that in the mindset and we'll try to get a workshop set up sometime.
Yep.
Any other items of business and comments? Any previous business? And I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Linda, you can figure out who did that.
Larry, Butler moved and Candelaria second.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay, McDaniel?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Levy?
No, just kidding, yes.
Candelaria?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Everybody have a good one, everybody.
Bye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Love you, Tom.
Good night.
Good night.